We'll call the meeting ordered September 4th. We'll start with a pledge.
Pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Okay, I guess we're gonna go to the town administration. Straighter up, weekly update?
Before we get to the town administrator's weekly update, I wanted to give our condolences to Tom Cash and his wife Marie passed away. I don't know if any of you knew Marie, but she was a wonderful, wonderfully sweet, sweet lady. I just feel really bad. You know, she was just always there when the kids were at school. She'd just, you know, field trips and bacon stuff.
She was a teacher, right, in Sanford for many, many years?
Yeah.
Always at the benefit.
You know, and she always did a lot at the Acton School when the boys were little and stuff. And my oldest one and her boy grew up together. I'm just sorry, sorry to have that happen. But we send our condolences and hope Tom and Emo will be okay. Thank you.
I made folders for you guys.
Thanks.
Some pertains to some, some pertains to the other.
Okay, town administrator.
All right. So, we have corresponded hopefully for the last time with the tax billing company. I did put a proof in your folder if you want to just take it home and look at it tonight if you happen to see anything. Had Michelle check all the indebtedness numbers and the, you know, the basics, that were the major numbers. And most of it's from last year, but sometimes if you look at them enough times during the day, you kind of get, you know, blind eyed by it. So if you can just take it home and look at it, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
In your folder, you have a, it's probably towards the back, subject says auditor remarks. You know, for anybody that might be watching this meeting for the first time, we used to have workshop meetings from five to six when I could sit down with the Board of Selectmen and just kind of have these one-on-one conversations with them and let them know of everything going on in town and, you know, update them on anything going on. Because of a few situations that got changed so that we do it all here, so it's, I mean, it certainly has its pros and cons, but there's some things that are just not easy to say out loud and in front of a group and in front of cameras. It's not that we have anything to hide, but some things just don't need to be televised. However, this being my only option to speak to you guys as a group, here it goes. This is about this auditor.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So, I just, I mean, I feel, well, I feel like, you know, some people watching may be like, why is she, you know, why is she bringing up this email at a public meeting? Because it's my only time with you guys to go over these things and...
You're talking about the email that was sent to us there the other day?
Yes. So, I wanted, so I wanted you to first reference, so on 8/22, you guys got an email from the treasurer.
Yep.
The treasurer, the chief financial officer, and it says, "These are a few of the auditor's concerns that she and I have discussed throughout the audit. She will follow up more with a management letter with recommendations, but wanted to give the board the heads up." So, Michelle sends this out to you guys. I know that we're all busy and everybody's busy, and I don't know 100% that you get all of your emails, so my job, I believe, as administrator, is to make sure that you see these the next time we chat. So she talked about the gym, "Not funded by taxes in current year, not sustainable on its own. Article 43, the Great Lakes and ponds, the applications may not qualify according to statute. She wants to know who's checking them. The ambulance building, the $44,000 worth of write-offs." I brought those to your attention last week. There were two other ones that I neglected, because if you go back and watch the tape, you'll see me fumbling to try to find my paper I never found. Review of the bank recs. She did say that a second person should be starting to sign off on the bank recs. So you can see that, beginning with June of 2019, the town administrators already started reviewing and acknowledging the completion. So now Michelle, she already balanced the books and balanced her bank recs every month, but the auditor asked for some, a second person to look at them. So that's already happening. Maybe that's why I didn't mention it. And on the back, on the Xerox contract at the fire department, the lease contract, and I talked to at least two of you, but I don't know which two.
Yeah, you talked to me.
Was it you? Because you were the liaison, I think at the time.
Time.
Anyways, the fire chief, the previous fire chief had signed a contract with a Xerox on the back of the first one there. Oh, maybe, maybe she didn't print it. Anyways, one line, it says, "The lease contract was signed by the chief. Contract should not be signed by department heads unless the selectman formally gave approval." So, these are just random things that she finds. So, when this came up, she wanted selectmen minutes showing that he had the authority to sign that. So, anyways, so this email came out on the 22nd. Last week, at the selectmen's meeting, I updated you on these concerns. I went back and watched the tape and don't have any concerns about what I said.
There was, there was no discussion with us?
No, there was no discussion. I mean, I just reiterated the list of concerns from the auditor. I mean, that's, you know...
Yep.
So I went back and watched it to make sure that I didn't say, you know... So the email that went out to select members of the road committee, Dave Winchell, Ed Walsh, Kim Stacy, Jennifer Rue, Cindy Hart, Jay Ward, and Carol Kay, which I didn't find as being a road committee member. Isn't Mr. Senior, Dennis Winchell Senior on it? I mean, David Winchell Senior?
He is a road committee member, but he does, I don't believe he's, yeah, he's taken emails.
He has emails. And Robin Hamm is a member.
Yep.
So perhaps I misunderstood, this comes from the chair of the road committee. Perhaps I misunderstood, but I believe I heard at the last board of selectmen's meeting that the auditor could not find info regarding these funds and was questioning who was checking it. There's a great deal of time spent developing the application for these funds. In fact, the application requires documentation from the road association that has been properly established. The town has this required documentation with the application field. Now, the auditor saw the application, she, obviously that's where she pulled the original documents. There's a requirement to the private road within the watershed of Great Pond. This information is readily available, and she does attach some attachments where you can find this information. That paragraph and those paragraphs is no concern. I find it disturbing that since the road committee is tasked with this duty, that we are not contacted by the selectmen, the town administrator, or the auditor with these questions. I would hope that the above individuals, being the town administrator and the board of selectmen, and the auditor, are not allowing personal bias and dislike for the road committee members and the individuals that serve on it. Now, first, I mean, it's bothersome, I mean, I don't, you know, it's bothersome to see these kind of emails, because I didn't contact the road committee, because I don't work for the road committee.
Well, the, the problem is, is the auditor doesn't work for the road committee either.
I know, but, but to send an email out to assume that, you know, it hopes that the above-named individuals are not allowing personal bias and dislike for the road committee, who is she to say that I like or dislike anybody on the road committee?
Well, everybody knows I don't.
Well, I'm not talking about you, because I'm...
But the problem is, what I, what was disturbing about this, because she finds it disturbing, I find disturbing, the idea that not, the selectmen didn't even talk about it, there was no discussion about it. This was from the auditor and from where, I don't understand where any bias had come from anywhere. And this is ahead of our road committee.
So if I, as town administrator, don't bring you the concerns that the auditor brings publicly, then what? Then whose job's on the line? Then who's at fault?
Well, it comes to us. It doesn't...
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, we didn't, I didn't bring these things to you. I mean, I didn't bring one of the seven things to you.
You mentioned at the meeting, like you...
I brought all of them. I just, I'm upset, I mean, I'm upset, I just, it bothers me to see comments like that, because...
Well, it sounds like she just wants to make sure we're doing this the right way.
Right. And nobody attacked the road committee in any way, but I'm, I find it disturbing that...
No, just to make sure we...
I would hope the above individuals are not allowing their personal bias and dislike for the road committee.
That, that's obviously aimed at me.
Huh?
It's aimed at me.
Okay, well, fair enough.
But I, I don't believe I have shown any bias at this point, yet. And I would, I would think before these emails get sent out, that there's some substance to it, because we never even commented, there was nothing. It's a big nothing burger.
Right, and just because the auditor makes recommendations or says things, you know, I mean, she, you know, people recommend policies and things every day. I mean, they're...
I, I feel that the problem is here is, this, this committee member feels that she should be getting the information the selectmen get, when the selectmen get it, and she's not a selectman.
But unless the selectmen tell me to do that, I have a job to do like everybody else. I can't, you know, I can't...
But we talked about it right here.
Yeah.
So I just, I mean, so I guess, if we're gonna, I mean, the email is bothersome. A, because the entire road committee didn't get it, and, you know, again...
That's, that's kind of a big deal, because there's two people on that road committee. Probably should've got it, and there was a person that's not even part of the road committee that did get it.
Right.
So I don't understand...
I mean, I feel like the board has complimented the, the road committee each time they come in with their Article 43. I mean, I do whatever I can to help them and get them the information. I don't, I mean, one of the things I have on here is Loop Road. I mean, they were approved months ago, when we can't find anybody to come get the check.
And honestly, honestly, when, when I signed off on that bill, I had a little bit of concern on that. But that was something that was done before I moved, I came, got in this position. I do have an issue with the idea that we're, we're, when that, when that was passed through, that was for DEP issues, you know, control and those issues, not for grading roads. That's what it, it's not for that, and that's what we pay for.
Do grading roads help runoff, so that we do?
Well, I guess, you know, the gray area, you can, you know, but that's, that's, that's one thing.
You know.
And with the, with the auditor, now, I haven't looked into this at all.
Neither have I, none of us have.
And now, now that this, this email's come along, I guess I have to.
Well, I mean, she's going to eventually give you a management letter that's gonna give you, you know, thoughts on all of them. I mean, you know that I've spent half of my day today chasing T.G. Higgins with these $44,000 worth of write-offs...
Yeah.
...that they've done under no one's, no one's authority. So it's not like we're picking and choosing. I mean, I'm...
I believe the auditor did the right thing by mentioning something that she...
All she wants to do probably is make some adjustments to the form, so that instead of saying, "Is this, is this road, let's see, attached, prove it," you know, I mean, she just wants proof and documentation. It's gonna be minor things, but when I brought it to you, it was certainly not because we didn't like anybody, dislike anybody.
We're playing on a thin line here. The, the problem is, is when she mentioned this, she, she knows that the law states that we're not supposed to be putting money on private roads, but with this loophole and with this voted in, okay, there's a chance that that could be taken advantage of. And I think that might be one reason why she did it. She wants clarification and make sure that we don't get sucked into that, and which is not, no problem. I mean, if it's legit, it's legit. We're just gonna make sure that we, make sure it's legit.
Dot our i's, cross our t's, and smash our j's.
I guess it's just, it's just the common, I mean, nobody's doubting this countless hours they worked for the betterment of the town. We've tried to do, you know, there should not be political infighting. I mean, I guess I just didn't realize I did, and I don't like people assuming that I like or dislike people based on how many emails written, so. I would normally told you that behind closed doors, but I don't have that ability anymore. We had a, got a resident on Hooper Road, Hopper Road.
Hooper.
Shapley, Acton, I don't count them in. Concerned, and I'm not gonna, he's got some concerns regarding a road. He came before you guys in May at a public meeting. Today he has, or in the last couple of days, he has emailed Kim in regards to the, what law did he reference? What was the law that he...
It was the mains defect law.
Defect law. We will turn it over to the road commissioner, and because of the wording in it, we'll have to turn over the attorney to look at it as well.
Okay.
I had another dog bite in Acton slash Shapley. This one was a little, well, the dog bite happened at Iron Tails. Apparently that, and I did talk to Greg today, he's never had a problem with, with people having dogs outside, if they're just, you know, someone was down there with a, with a dog that didn't belong to them. They apparently own some sort of dog sitting company in Shapley. And she had someone else's dog.
Iron Tails, yeah.
So she took, right, she took the dog to Iron Tails. They were watching one of the events going on out, down there outside. There was a bite, skin break, whatever, I don't want to be tied to words, but once the skin is broken and there's blood, we treat it as a bite, so. But that happened Saturday or Sunday. Animal Control was notified yesterday. So I spent some of the day working with Jerry and the state to find out where jurisdiction lies, because the, because the dog lives in Shapley, you know, as far as the quarantine and so forth. So Jerry and Frank are working together to kind of sort it all out, so. Billing update, so I have probably about 15 emails from Higgins today, and I've started sending them over to the new billing company, and Michelle and I had a conference call with Brad Moore as well. For now, we're not finding, we're trying to figure out where and what the justification is of writing off the ones that were written off. In some cases, if an insurance company pays 90%, then they may have to write the other 10% off. If they have agreements with certain, you know, companies and runs, that's, that's, that's expected based on the town's attorney. However, some are just being written off without ever being billed. So the auditor has now asked for, we're getting a breakdown of the list, so out of the 44,453 that it was, we've asked them for a breakdown of every single one. So I've got all the patient names, the insurance company, when they were billed.
How long ago were these billings?
Well, see, that's the problem. We're also looking at the statute for some of these.
Some of them over a year?
Well, supposedly you have six years for collections, but one per, one company has told me that you have to bill at least within three months. Remember, David, you won't remember, but Kim should remember that we had some trouble uploading our runs on timely fashion with the prior administration, so that's, that could be playing a part in it. So we're trying to get all of the information together, see what, if anything, is left that we can turn over to the new company. But again, we're trying to, I mean, that's just a large number. She had like $9,000 in collections, but 44 in write-offs. So, that's a lot.
It's a lot of money.
So, we're trying to, trying to figure it out. Damn pricing, that's the, I wish Ed was here, because I can't, I'm probably not gonna be able to do a whole lot without him. So we know that Sanford, Shapley, and Acton are working on coming up with the funding for this. The city of Sanford sent us a copy of the loan that they signed for the $100,000, and they wanted the first payments. And they, but we don't have, we've never, we've asked the townspeople to appropriate the money and expend it, but not to enter into a contract, and they're looking at a five-year contract. So, but we also don't have a total price, that, a complete package price, so we're waiting for the town manager.
We really ought to have that before we...
Well, right. Because we've, we appropriated at last town meeting a total of $75,000. Some came out of undesignated, some came out of the maintenance, of the damn maintenance account. But we have $75,000, so we're trying to figure out what the bottom line is.
And we need how much?
Well, we don't know, that's the problem.
Yeah, because they haven't come up with a total number yet.
Well, but they must have, if they've taken out the loan, and now the first payment of the loan has already come due. The finance director today told me that they had, Sanford had to cover Acton and Shapley's $5,000, and I said, first of all, we got the email on August 26th, the payment was due August 1st. Second of all, I mean, you know, Michelle and I cannot trump, we're not gonna trump town meeting. I mean, if, so Acton is better off, if, let's just say it's $74,000, just to pay it and be done. You know, we don't want to enter into a five-year contract and make payments on it, but until they give us the bottom line in a signed document, you know, we're not real sure. You know, Michelle's like, looking, until we...
So right now Sanford has a loan to fix, to fix that dam.
Well...
And then where, what we're doing, we're paying Sanford, they're paying the payment? Is that what's happening?
So as I understand it, the amount that Sanford's gonna pay 50%, we pay 25, they pay 25, and then there was $100,000 over and above that. That $100,000, according to Sanford, it was agreed upon at the coalition meetings, that that $100,000 would be a loan split three ways with the towns.
So...
Which, A, I mean, and you know I'm a sitting selectman in Shapley, nobody has the authority to do that. I mean, they can have these conversations at these meetings, and that's great useful information.
They're right, we owe them another 25 grand.
Right. But we don't have, we don't have the total project price yet. So, we got another email today, I was gonna try to pull up...
They had had the total project, but then they decided to try to cut back.
They went back out to bid, right. So it was...
Went back out, so I haven't heard.
Right, so it was what, 800, oh, that's right, you've been going to some of the meetings.
Yeah, I went to...
But you guys didn't sign anything?
No.
Didn't commit?
Nope.
It was what, about $816,000? Or three?
It was up there.
Or maybe it was $316,000?
I thought, I thought it was a little under four.
Yeah. Let me see if I can pull up my emails.
Yeah, I thought there were...
316, but they went back out to bid.
That's what they were working, what was that?
316, but they went back out to bid trying to get...
Because some of the work had already been done. It didn't, you know, and only one person bid on it.
Right. Right, and that's exactly where that, so we don't, so I spoke to the, like I said, I spoke to the finance company, the director today, and she said that the city, what is the manager, was back, just getting back from vacation, she was gonna meet with him Friday, you know, and try to get some numbers and, and a contract. So again, we can, you guys can pay the bill on your authority, but we can't enter into contracts without town approval, so we're gonna try to just be done with it.
All right.
Sent you an email about triple E.
Yeah, we saw that.
See that? So, and David's more of a horse, horse person, this is a mosquito-infected...
Yeah.
...disease, a horse that was in York County. It was put down, and that's pretty much all the memo said.
Yeah, yeah, and it affects humans, too.
Right.
If you don't get treatment, you know, it's something, you know, it'd really screw you up pretty bad. That's about all I know about that. I know, I know what it does to horses.
So there is a confirmed case, and it was in York County, they didn't say where. Loop Road. So one of the things that, when the board changed, if the board changes any form, any documents, that Article 43, there's no place on there for a phone number. The people, they appropriated the money and approved the money for Article 43, but Michelle's been trying to get ahold of them since the 1st of July. There's one email on the application, but...
What do you mean, Loop Road?
So Loop Road applied for funds out of Article 43.
Yeah, didn't we just already sign off on that?
Yes.
Have they re-approved?
No, we've been sitting on the check for two months, because we can't, we don't know who to get ahold of.
Chris Swan.
Got a phone number?
Yep.
Excellent. So we sent an email, we've sent a couple of emails to the, to the one that's on the application, but we're just not getting any response.
Chris Swan is the treasurer, so he would be the one wanting to get ahold of.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'll take it. I sent you guys and Leslie an email today, seeing if anybody had a contact, because...
I didn't get it today, obviously.
I'm kind of surprised they haven't, you know, called to say, hey, where's, you know, because I know they got approved, I think they were here the week after you guys signed, but that falls back to the bank recs and, you know, uncashed checks, so. I'll take his number if you don't mind. That might be it for that piece of it. I did take the elected officers policy off the agenda, because Ed wasn't here tonight. The executive session scheduled... So I know I need to fix...
Phone number?
Swannie?
That's what everybody calls him, so...
I'm gonna stick with Mr. Swan.
It's Chris Swan.
Thank you. So if we take a quick peek at the agenda, and I know we gotta change, fix the date on there, only department head that reached out to me was Mr. Langley. Got an update for the parking lots, District 1, H-Roe, sand salt bid, roof on the salt shed, copier lease, truck and boat trailer bids, fire department, and executive session. Anything else you want me to add?
Looking for it still, I got it, once my paperwork, oh, there it is. Parking lot. I think that's good.
Kim? All right, so did you guys already sign the bills?
I did.
I started.
Okay, so I'm gonna go change the date, make some copies for the public, and...
It's not yet.
David came in early today.
This for Joe.
It'd make it a lot easier if these were all like a cluster. Signature for the fire department.
I know, because, like, they do the same thing up at...
They do it for the school, the school budget comes in it.
Right, and, you know, up at the transfer station, same thing.
Same thing there.
Yeah.
I came up early to do this, I didn't do it.
I'm filing all the liens tomorrow, so you'll see, and there's just an estimate, but it's already down, had a few people pay, so.
No.
Pete doing?
Good, working a lot.
Nice.
Yeah. I'm really good, proud of you.
Are you getting ready to close the camp up?
Nah, usually about first of November. We do ice fish up there all winter, so...
Oh, okay, yeah. So what's a second hole?
Yep. It's so small, nobody else can come. But... It's cold, and we'll shut her down early. You haven't been here in a while, so we're just doing what we would do out there, right here. So that's what we just did, because that's what people wanted, so...
I think it's working all right.
Yep.
What are you signing?
Signing the warrants.
He's signing the warrants. He's signing all the bills right now.
So when you say warrant, are you saying payroll, that?
Payrolls, billing, copier stuff.
Anything and everything. Yeah, there we go, yep.
Lot of it's the same stuff every week, you know?
But I came in earlier and did it, just so that...
I came in early to do it, and I didn't do it, so...
Because we have our meetings on Wednesday, one of us has to come in on Tuesday and do the payroll, so payroll can get out and people get paid, so, and that's...
That is, the town is dated every week, or every other week?
Every week.
Has it ever considered every two weeks? It's supposed to be cheaper.
It's a thought.
I think, yeah. If we can mention at the meeting, we can discuss it.
There you go.
I mean, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but if they may turn around and say it is cheaper, that would be a good thing.
What is my agenda?
All signed.
All signed.
I made you a new one.
You didn't make me a new one?
Yeah, I did.
So this is just a demo log?
Yeah, I just wanna look through, make sure I have your sales and just kinda all this stuff looks right. Not nice, not apt to worry about it, I get them, I'll tell ya.
I love it, I don't have to worry about it, we just-
I hate taxes. I don't have a mortgage, so. Life is a little better.
Say I went to take the date out, went to change the date, took it out altogether.
Oh, look at that.
I want you to write that in.
So what is today? Do we decide it's the fourth, right? The fourth.
Nice.
Alright, okay. Are you ready to go again?
Okay, I guess we're gonna continue on here. Let's see.
That's the fourth, well. Be the minutes of the last meeting, I have that here. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
You just have to show your hands. Okay, there we go. I make a motion to, um, approve the minutes of August fourteenth.
I'll second that.
Show your hands.
And, um, we'll table the, uh, last week's agenda.
I, that's fine, okay.
We're gonna make a motion, we had table last week's agenda, I mean, uh, minutes of the meeting.
Okay, I'll second that. Alright, so we tabled-
Okay, so department head and committee chair updates.
Uh, Will Langley, District One, uh, just to update what we've been doing. Uh, the week of the fair, so I think that was like the twenty-second through the twenty-fifth, we were gonna do the Manor Project, but we had some heavy rain. So we went to West Shore Drive, we just had to do some shoulder work with a skid steer, and, uh, Rudy Pepin let us haul into his pit, and, uh, we did some, cut some brush up out of the dump. And, uh, then last week, we did the Manor Project, replaced the culvert and did the ditching, and the ditch is all seated, and all we gotta do now is just pave over the, uh, where the culvert is. We just gotta pave the cross ditch. And, um, this week, we did some, we've been doing some ditching on the H Road, uh, right in front of Virginia's house. Uh, yesterday, we cut some brush at the dump, because when we go up there to ditch up out of the dump, uh, we're gonna clean up on the backside of the, uh, fence there, we're gonna try to pull that rock out, because last year the, uh, ice built up in there, and then it was back in the culvert up, so we're gonna try to pull that rock out. Uh, we gotta cut another tree when we go, when we go in there. Then, I got a project for next week on the guardrail I showed you, and you wanna see it, Kim?
Yeah, thank you.
I'll need a copy for Ed as well.
You're gonna make a copy of this fair, right? That's interesting, alright. I'll have her do that, and then we'll give this back to you, okay?
And then that, that's it, so. Do you, do you want me to stay up here for the rest of these, or?
Um, I mean, we'll get to them, well, parking lot, you can. I left my pile.
Are there any other department heads there?
Anybody else wanna speak, then?
I mean, I left my pile.
Joe's gonna come up.
Joel Leterno, District Two, Road Commissioner. Uh, just to kinda bring everybody up to speed, it's been a little bit since I've been here, so, um, obviously, people that don't know, East Shore Drive did get paved, so we prepped and paved that. Um, we did do a shim and overlay. Uh, gravelled in the driveways on East Shore, and we spent a little bit of time on more signage around town, signs that were missing, and, you know, street signs and stuff, and, excuse me, we did put more signs on East Shore, more speed limit, slow children signs, yada yada. And then, um, you know, miscellaneous coal patch and brush cutting. I did get the, well, I had Pat Stevens fix the cement abutment.
Yeah, that looked good.
Yeah, it come out really good.
Yup.
And, uh, I'm waiting here back for mainline fence, for the guardrail replates, for the guardrail replates, so.
Now, you, you got them all, did they give you a timeframe at all when they were gonna do that?
Mainline?
Yeah.
I called them twice, and last week I talked to Rocky, and he said he was gonna call me or email me. Well, I was gone, but I still haven't heard from him, so I gotta put a call into him tomorrow, and didn't sound like they were that far out, but he still didn't give me any sort of a time period.
Still got the barricades there anyways right now.
Right, so. Um, and then just, just a quick, you know, moving forward from here, before winter, prep and pave new bridge. So, that is something that we're gonna get done. I talked to Tim from FR today for the scheduling. I'd already talked to Frank originally, Frank Junior, about the schedule for paving that road.
Yup.
So. And then some trees and removal on that East Shore, so. That's my plan.
Good. Thank you. People will be excited about new bridge.
Any other department heads?
What do you want?
Okay, I guess we'll, uh, I don't know, I guess we'll move on to old business. Parking lot.
So Will did as we asked, and, uh, he brought someone in to, uh, give us the official legal measurements on the, um, on the spaces, um, so that's the good news.
So, what are they?
Uh, nine feet, and handicap has to be fifteen feet. Well, it was nine, go ahead. Nine to twelve.
Yeah, nine to, nine to-
Yeah, nine to twelve is illegal.
And then you add six feet for the handicap, I was listening.
Mm-hmm.
That's the good news. Bad news is the whole parking lot is-
Screwed up.
Screwed up.
Yeah, I kinda figured it out, it was kinda that pattern.
So, I only put it back on the agenda to basically say, you know, do you wanna wait? And, the idea, the idea that he and the individual had that was, you know, that gave us the recommendation is just to cross out that one parking spot by the library for the rest of winter to cover us liability-wise and deal with the whole thing in the spring.
I feel like we would originally do.
When we can, uh, budget for all of it.
So we all said just take care of it now? Just cross out the-
Well, we're just gonna cross out that one spot, we're not gonna touch anything else.
Yeah, just cross out the one spot, and I'll put a no parking sign there, and he said that'll cover us, and-
Yeah, it'd make more sense to it in the spring anyways, we got winter, you know, we're gonna realign it, might as well wait till spring, have a fresh set of lines.
Well, and plus, we're gonna have to go all the way up, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'll do, I'll do that next week, so.
That's fine with me, sounds good. Thanks, Will.
Okay, prior District One equipment.
So the letter was sent out-
Get back up here, Will.
How'd that go?
Now, I'm gonna, uh, I ended up, um, I talked to Mr. Mooney, was it Thursday?
Prior District One Road Commissioner.
Prior, oh, sorry, prior District One Road Commissioner, um, and, um, he hadn't had it unbolted off, off the truck yet, so I had, uh, Will call him to line up, what day they're gonna actually do it, have, have you talked to him?
Yeah, I'm gonna call him, he's, he was supposed to either call me this afternoon and let me know, or I'm gonna call him first thing tomorrow morning again, because I talked to him this morning. They're supposed to do everything today, so that thing, just get ready to pick off and just put in a truck, and-
Yeah.
And we'll get out, while we're there, we'll get everything while we're there, so. I'm gonna call him first thing in the morning again tomorrow, and hopefully we can go get it in the morning.
Okay.
And I, I just told him that if it's not gonna be tomorrow, I'm turning it back over to you guys, so.
Yup.
So if Friday comes, I mean, he's gonna try one more time, if Friday comes, what's, what are we to?
Well, at this point, I mean, we've never had an issue like this before. Um, I'm hoping that it does get done before Friday, but, uh-
If not, I'll just put it on next to its agenda.
Have the sheriff, right, and let him know that-
And put a fire in his tail and get him moving along, so. Okay. Uh, you might as well stay right there, Will. Uh, H Road paving.
So me and you discussed, you know, we discussed what we're gonna do, and we're just gonna wait until spring?
Well, we, we, everybody, we want everybody involved in this conversation.
So, so, so we just, we, I end up talking, and I made up my mind, I'm just gonna pull my decision to have a special town meeting, and, uh, we're just gonna wait till the springtime, and, and we're gonna go from there in the springtime, so, that's, that's all.
Okay, and down to new business, sand salt bids.
So you have, um, a draft, um, I didn't, met, I met with Mr. Langley, and we emailed a copy of this to Mr. Leterno, so they've both seen it. Um, a couple of minor changes, um, in the past, it said up to three thousand yards. Um, Mr. Langley did want it to say for three thousand yards. Um, I haven't gotten Mr. Leterno's input on it yet, but this is, uh, just a draft that-
Well, typically, when you put these out, when we've always done it before, was you put up to a certain amount of yardage, not an exact, because what'll end up happening, if you have a bidder bid in, say, okay, well, you said three thousand yards, I expect to bring three thousand yards.
He said he wanted three thousand yards, that's why I put it that way. I'm just-
The problem is-
What if we don't need that much, though?
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, at least it covers us. If we do up to-
You're better off going up to four thousand yards, you don't have to take four thousand yards.
Just gonna say, do we not have to?
In the middle of wintertime, if you need to go get more, you don't have to worry, say, the contractor don't come back and say, hey, I gave you three thousand, that was only good for three thousand yards, now you want another thousand, the price is this. You, 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 you wanna cover yourself, but you put up to, that makes, it gives you flexibility with that, that bid. That's what I would suggest doing.
Okay.
Up, Will.
Do you think, Joe, I mean?
Come up to, Joe.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what you guys just do in the past, and we'll just leave it like that.
Well, I-
If that's what you, and what-
We always did it up to, because you did, you never know how much you're gonna use, and you don't wanna limit yourself to that amount of yardage. And, um, typically, and I have found that when you go up to a little bit more, they tend to give you a better deal.
Alright, so we'll just, we'll put the up to back in there, then, then that, then that's it, you guys?
Yeah?
Yeah, I mean, we, we could do like Dave said, and that's what, I actually was talking to Will about that today. It's impossible to get three thousand yards, depending on how you buy, you know, by the ton. It's, you know, if they say they put twelve, fourteen, whatever they're hauling, it's not gonna be exact, you know? But I think the up to would probably be-
How much are you saying you guys got down there now?
Probably five hundred yards.
Five hundred, yup, yup. So, you get three thousand in there.
Right.
Unfortunate part, if you get three thousand, any more than that, you-
Well, I wanna leave room for salt, too, so. I think we should just do up to.
Yeah, we'll just-
And that way there, if we only get, say, twenty, uh, twenty-five, twenty-eight hundred, we'll have more room for salt.
I would increase your yardage.
Right.
Just in case, nothing says you have to do that.
So why don't we change it to up to four thousand?
Yeah, that's fine, whatever, I think whatever it was before would-
Up to four thousand or three thousand?
No, let's go up to four thousand.
That way, if they need it, it'll stay the same price versus-
Right.
And if you don't need it, you don't need it.
Right. Then we just buy what we want.
Doesn't tie your hands to three thousand.
No, exactly.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll make that change, and I can get it out, start advertising?
Yup.
Yup.
Sounds good.
Might as well stay right, might as well stay right up here.
Well, um, B, on new business, roof on salt shed.
Yeah, so I, I met with Joel Hilton back, I guess it was May, before the budgeting-
Salt shed or the?
Oh. Oh, I was thinking about the maintenance building.
Okay, yeah, the maintenance building, we got it down at Salt Shed, you gotta say, I hope there no problem with that.
No, no, so I don't know if there was something with this, no, no.
Okay, so you're, you're talking about the maintenance building?
Right, I met with Joel Hilton, he's a steel contractor out of North Berwick. I just wanted to get some rough ideas, this was before actually town meeting, when we had to get all our budget numbers in. So, he got on the roof, and I think that roof is, if it's galvanized, it's a real thin galvanized, or it's an aluminum. Some of the screws have actually backed out, and there's holes, probably inch or two around the screws.
So it rotted?
So it rotted through. So what he said that he could do would be get some oversized, like rubber flat, like fender washers or something, and then just caulk it, it'd be a temporary fix, but if we went to replace that whole roof, we're gonna, now we'll have to replace the insulation, because the insulation's all wet.
Is it the whole roof that it did to?
It's front corners, but how much did it go back?
It did go back, the roof goes up, it was only leaking that one corner, but-
No, the roof pitches, right, the roof pitches away from the doors.
Yup.
But what I'm saying is if water got down in there, ran down in between the roof and the-
Is there any way you can check that?
Well, some of the, some of the insulation's actually pulled away, so it's sagging, because it, it made a pocket, and it just ripped out. So we really don't know, my, my thing for now would probably be just to get, have, I was gonna have Joe Piers come and look at it.
Yup.
And see what he recommends, I mean, if we can get by with another couple, three years, the way, you know, if we just caulk it and do whatever-
Yeah, it's not heated or nothing right now, we-
But we can't do anything with the electrical panel till we get the roof fixed.
Right.
Because it's leaking in both corners now.
Always leaking in that corner, yeah. Okay.
So.
So what's your recommendation, what do you wanna do?
Well, I, I wanna meet with Joe, which I've already talked to him about it, we just haven't-
So you wanna continue getting some more prices, some more ideas, before we make a decision on what we're gonna do?
I, I just don't think we can afford to replace whole roof, with the other things that we wanna do.
Right.
I mean, we've got twenty-one thousand-
At least if you can get it sealed up.
We got like twenty-one thousand in the account, but I don't know how much it's gonna cost for that roof.
Well, and really, six thousand was budgeted for that extra, if you look at the spreadsheet the treasurer gave you, the other fifteen's almost accounted for with other things?
Right, but when I, we put the six thousand in the spring, that was actually, that might have been after, when I met with Joel. He, he's like, you know, it was gonna be a temporary fix, basically, so I budgeted for a temporary fix for that roof.
Okay.
So.
I, I, I would say my suggestion is get a price off precision there.
Right.
See what the cost is, and if the cost comes in way too high, then what we'll do is, we've only got budgeted six thousand dollars to fix that, then we'll use that six thousand, we'll go from there.
Right. I mean, the other, when I figured that six thousand, that was for sec, like the gates and stuff, whatever we had to do to those, which, you know, Will had gotten some prices from stone fencing, which-
You mean the six thousand?
So the account-
It wasn't the six thousand, I don't think, was just for the roof, it was just other additional-
Do you have this?
Needed to be.
This came out of you guys' budget books, roof repair, electricity hookup, an old storage building, tree cutting near entrance to improve visibility, that was the six thousand dollar increase they presented.
So, I guess we'll just have to wait and see what Joe comes up with, and let's go from there.
Come back, and then we can, at least if we could get it sealed up.
Right.
And it's not leaking.
What do you think, Will, are they good?
That's good, sounds good to me.
Okay.
Okay.
So just let us know when you hear from them, then, okay, thank you.
Okay, C, copier lease.
So we've been talking about that for the last couple of weeks, this is the copier downstairs. It's the same Budget Technology copier that we used, um, the monthly payment is actually less than what we budgeted for. Code enforcement has approved it, um, they want a basic, small one, they want it similar to what's down there now. Um, but it does need to be upgraded based on its condition, so. It's, um, sixty months, same as last, the two, eighty-six dollars and nine cents. Like I said, they have approved it downstairs, so I just need a signature. So we can swap out the old and get a new.
Just-
Nope, just the-
Alright, just sign on.
You can make a motion to approve it if you'd like.
Make a motion, we approved the new agreement for the printer for the code office. With, what's the company name?
Budget Technology.
Budget Technologies.
And I'll second that.
All hands?
Alright, so, customer? What do you want us to sign here? Okay, put it through the-
There's a X, it says-
There, there.
Customer?
Customer?
Yeah, a two.
Alright, here we go. There you go.
Isn't there another page?
Oh, yeah, there was one.
Next on the agenda, uh, the truck, boat, trailer bid. So I can see that here. This is the uh, bid for the ninety-two Ford F-350 XLT. I'd say this must be the white utility truck, yeah? And, there should be another one in here somewhere.
There you go.
Okay, and then we got the smoker craft, boat, and homemade trailer. And this has got a minimum bid of five hundred dollars, and the F-350 with a minimum bid of twenty-five hundred dollars. What is Amer, you, you want me to read this all right out?
That's a two, sure.
Okay. I guess I'm not gonna let it, so. Let's see.
But um, anyone wishing to participate should complete the portion below and return to the town administrator sealed and clearly marked truck bid on the outside of the envelope. No later than noon on Wednesday, September twenty-fifth.
We don't have to approve that, do we?
No, just wanted you to see it, let you know that they're gonna be out there. Um, all sales are final, vehicles are as-is, no warranties. And I did speak to um, Dave to let him know that we put on there that they um, can be viewed at the station, so he'll pass that order along to his staff.
Okay, Fire Department budget.
Alright, so this is just for you to kinda look at. Um, so I had the treasurer run some numbers for us based on October fourteenth, that's a Monday, giving you a start date for your new paramedic and your new fire chief. So that's based on the um, hourly rates that we discussed. You're gonna have a shortfall of four thousand two hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-three cents. So what I need you looking at the next couple of, the next couple of weeks, um, 'cause this is a decision for the board, not, is if you look at the Fire Department, the second page, we've X'd out, and I don't know how, photocopied. Do you guys have this? Where's your folder, David? I had it in such good order.
I know, and I, I.
You have it.
I believe so, right here, here we go.
Fire Department.
There we go, so turn the page. Is this um, it, because it's in yellow, probably didn't photocopy, so see where it says Medicaid, Medicare? Put a line above it, so you can't touch anything from Medicare up.
Okay, so we can't mess with those.
All the way to the top.
Okay, with an arrow.
So that's all of your um, salaries and benefits and stipends and, so basically from five oh three down.
We can do some.
You need four thousand two hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-three cents, and we will have to make an official vote on that, not tonight. But we'll need a vote to see where we can, where you wanna take it out of, um, so.
So that's all we come up with, it was a four thousand dollar shortfall? Fire chief with the rates.
Well, I mean, the fire chief's going down to twenty hours and we're bringing in a full-time, yes, with the benefits.
So it's lower than I thought it was.
Yeah, I thought it was gonna be more too.
And that's through October fourteenth, so this number's gonna change, so that's our date we're shooting for.
Okay.
So the numbers don't have to be changing.
And it's, it's, I, I believe that number at four thousand, whatever we just said, if we, we just, we're, we're, we put out the applications, correct?
Um, they will be tomorrow.
Yeah, okay, so we're gonna time, that, it's probably gonna be later than that for the fire chiefs, there's no doubt.
I mean, twenty hours, if we have it posted, I mean, it may not, you may not get that many applicants as a part-time.
We'll see.
So. Depending on, you know. Yeah, it can, I mean, that, it can certainly be adjusted, but I needed something to go by.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, um, executive session.
Did you wanna do public comment and all that first, just so you don't, I mean, it's up to you, I don't know how long you're gonna be.
Probably a good idea, we do public comment.
In case somebody's got, 'cause that may be a little while.
So why don't we, uh, hold off on G, and we'll go right to public comment.
Any public comments?
Dennis Long, this is just for clarification. The slutman's policy on spending money. Is it right that um, anything over a thousand dollars, you have to get three prices?
No, five thousand dollars.
Well.
State requires a five thousand dollars, if anything's over five thousand dollars, go dig it.
I appreciate that, uh, but the slutmen, I think, have a tighter.
Yeah, I thought we did some.
Dave, we have a purchasing policy, let me pull it up, you're right. And I was gonna mention that about the roof, but I figured I'd wait and.
Well, I, I, just with Joe and Will are new.
Yep.
Uh, I didn't want them to, uh, somebody come back and call them on something that they might have done. It wasn't according to the slutman's policy, that was all.
Some amounts, and I'm trying to pull it up, I don't have it all, um, are, they, they have to go out to seal bid after a certain amount, and that's maybe what you're thinking of, under five thousand, but there is um.
That means if like Joe has precision roofing coming and he gives a six thousand dollar price on that, we can't accept that until we put out the bid, that's, that's what you're talking about.
Or over a thousand even.
Right, but there is a policy that says he has to at least get three written, and that's what, let me pull it up.
That's called a thousand dollar rate.
Competitive pricing, hold on, my bad, my phone's quicker than my. Uh, for all purchasing goods and services over a thousand dollars, department heads are required to solicit no less than three competitive prices in writing.
Okay, thank you. I just, I just didn't want uh, these guys get.
Anything over a thousand.
So really theoretically, Joe can't buy a thousand dollars worth of gravel in one day?
Well, it depends on, I mean, if you, if you award your, if you award your, you know, if you award it to a bid to an, to a company for the year, then that wouldn't, you know.
We don't do that here.
Then, I mean, based on that policy, yeah.
Yeah, that, that policy doesn't work.
Um, so I can put it on the agenda for next week and you guys can decide, discuss it?
Yeah, sure, probably oughta.
I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
And I, I thought that Michelle had given them copies, but maybe not, but.
And if they don't work, then the slutmen have the authority to change it.
Right.
Yeah, that could really put a monkey wrench in uh, these guys' work this summer, this is the summer.
We didn't have any problems, I mean, have we, I was gonna say, I don't feel like we've had any issues.
Well, if we go by that policy, it would.
But we have been going by it, is what I mean, that's what, that's what.
But I feel like Michelle is pretty, pretty stringent to go by it, but we can get her opinions on the policy and I can put it on the agenda next week for you guys to talk about as a whole.
Yep.
Susan Meehan, um, a few weeks back, I don't even, I don't think you were here. I had made the suggestion that maybe the auditor should come and answer any of the questions that the taxpayers may have. And now with some questions that they have, could you reconsider that?
I think the board, a, as I understood it, the board was going to and supported that, um, she's just not done with the audit yet. She's nowhere, you know, I mean, they're not done with it. Once they turn over the management letter and get everything in order, um, I did tell her right away after the, spoke to the board. And everybody seems to be absolutely fine with that, but she's just not done with the audit yet.
Okay, great, and then.
And I think that she, I'm sorry to interrupt, but she was going to encourage the board to get the questions in advance, because she's the auditor for a lot of different towns. And if she needs to have specific numbers and answers in front of her, she's gonna want questions in advance.
Okay, whatever, sounds great. Also, over the holiday, I went to Great East, put my yacht in there, and uh, New Bridge Road, nobody ever talks about that road.
It's all over Facebook.
Joe just mentioned that he's gonna be.
Joe just said he's.
I guess I'm not on Facebook that often.
Joe just said he was gonna pump pavement this year.
Said it's getting paved.
Oh, it is?
He just said that, yes. He said it was this, this year he was gonna pave it.
Okay, excellent, very good.
Anybody else?
I don't like the connotation of that. Wondering if we, uh, Roland Waterhouse, wondering if we could get a detailed explanation from Joe in regard to what he plans on doing with New Bridge Road. To just say I'm gonna pave it, it leaves it wide open. You have culverts down there that need to be replaced. There's one culvert down there that uh, I'm sure you know about it, being as.
All about that road.
Being as uh, it's a large culvert and it uh, there's a brook that goes through that from Wilson into Horn Pond. And that's gonna require uh, probably DEP getting involved.
Nope.
But, kinda like to have a explanation as to what we're gonna do with New Bridge Road. And yes, New Bridge Road does need to be done. It has been the source of uh, comment on social media of late. In particular, one individual, but we won't throw any names out.
Well, I, yes. I guess I probably oughta throw this out there, that, that road was scheduled to be done last year before I resigned. And uh, other roads seem to be a priority before that, and uh, that's why it didn't get done last year. Um, Joe has said that he's gonna be uh, doing the road. I am sure he's gonna change all the culverts on, um, the big culvert. I'm not sure what he's gonna do, but Joe, would you come up here and answer that?
Thank you.
And based on the ordinance, he's gonna have to give you, similar to what, what Will has given you in the past, that breakdown.
Yeah.
Before it gets approved.
So yes, to answer your question, what culverts need to be changed will get changed. As far as the big one goes, I wasn't planning on changing that culvert, the big one. I didn't think it needed to be changed. But that doesn't mean that.
Why you looking at me? I don't know what he's speaking.
The culvert has to be changed, because of the new guidelines, what, the fish crossing and all that, you know, that, that, the, I don't wanna go back to crap on another road commissioner that put it in, which wasn't me. But I did do that culvert once, but then someone turned around, redid it because, whatever. And um, but unfortunately, that, this must be, the culvert's supposed to be embedded. If you look at the culvert that's done on the dam, uh, on Wilson, that's embedded, that has to be below grade, it's got, you know, the bottom of the culvert's supposed to be six inches below. So the unfortunate part about that is that one's supposed to be embedded also, and it was, it used to be embedded. When they redid it, they didn't embed it. Um, so it's supposed to be, aquatic's supposed to go upstream. Obviously, um, that road needs to be paved. If that's not something you can do this year, I mean, you could, you could pave up to it, do a shim over it for the winter or something, but I would suggest at some point it does.
Well, if it needs to get changed, I mean, if, if time allows us, it's, it's depending on when FR can pave. If they say they can come in in three weeks and we can't get to that big culvert, then we're just gonna have to, unfortunately, you know, replace the culvert next year, and then, you know, so I was planning on shimming and overlaying that road.
Yep.
So, that was my plan. And then whatever other culverts need to be replaced, they will get replaced.
And you have a copy of the ordinance, right, so you know what you're gonna provide to them prior to?
Yeah.
I just don't want you to get caught up.
So. Okay, well, is that suffice for you, Mr. Waterhouse?
I don't believe shimming and overlaying is the necessarily solution for New Bridge Road.
But do we have the money?
Well, okay, this is my other dilemma. With the money that I have left for paving, if I grind New Bridge and pave it, that leaves me no money for Hopper Road. The Hopper Road, I have to do something, whether it's just a drag shim for the winter, something has to be done with that road. You know, we're gonna patch over the culverts, it's not gonna be able to be done right, but I don't have the money to do everything the right way, so to speak. So if, if I grind New Bridge, it doesn't leave me much money, especially for shoulders and.
I'm gonna, I'll, I'll let you in. At, when we started that project, we got, got the ditching.
Right.
We had Abbot Hill, we had Abbot Hill lined up, we had it all lined up. But financially, to grind that road for a road that honestly doesn't get any truck traffic, because they can't go through.
Can't go over the bridge, right.
And um, it didn't make sense to dump the extra money in that when you could put a heavy shim, if you're going to patch it upright.
Right.
And you could put a heavy shim to that and be fine. That's, that's what we, what I always consider a secondary, secondary road. It wasn't the Youngs Ridge, it wasn't the H Road, it wasn't the Sanborns, the Hopper Roads and all that. Um, if you feel that that's, that's what you're gonna do with it, you know, just give us a, give us a description of what you're gonna do.
I'm just trying to.
You gotta understand, Joe, everybody wants to be a road commissioner in the audience. If you think this is what you're gonna do, just put it on paper and do your job.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I guess we'll go into executive session. I don't have the number of the executive session, so you got it?
I got it right here.
I'm playing at the wrong one.
So we're gonna go into executive session, four oh five, six A.
You made a motion.
I made an motion.
I'll second it.
Alright.
We'll leave the camera running.
All in favor?
All in favor? Okay.
So these are your two um, public announcements. Do I need to stay for the executive session?
Um, we gotta make an announcement after we've decided or anything like that.
Oh, yes.
Probably oughta be.
I have two things.
Turn this on.
One, I believe Lisa, but it's kind of an emergency, is.
Camera's on.
It's okay. I had a couple kids get swarmed by horses this year today, and stung like multiple times. Do you have that?
Do I have any hornet spray?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's my protection, in case somebody gets crazy at the counter. Yeah, I'll give you my can, or I can give you some petty cash, you can just go buy some.
I mean, I can buy out of pocket, get reversed, I've been doing that for other stocks, I've got an envelope full of receipts.
I have um, I have hornet spray, if that's all you want, boy, you can.
I just wanna go up and do it tonight, 'cause I have another practice tomorrow.
Yeah, come on, I have them.
What do I tell her?
She wants to be on the rec committee?
Yeah, so just don't tell her to reach out to you. I'll be writing and the board will consider it next week. Okay.
What does that say? I'm better than Mars?
What does that say? I'm better than Mars?
But I'll be back.
But I'll be back.
Take a motion to come out of executive session?
I'll second that.
Okay, we're gonna go to public comment. Oh, we skipped that. We're down to announcements. Okay, open seats on the, on boards, board committees, cemetery committee, one seat. Recreation committee, uh, one seat. Videographers wanted. If interested, please send a resume to APAT at Town Hall. And is this the Bean Supper?
Yes. So we're gonna have a Bean Supper at the Acton Congregational Church, um, Saturday, September 14th. It's gonna be from 4:30 to 6:30, um, served family style. Home baked red, white beans, ham and hot dogs, coleslaw, pies, coffee, tea. Adults are gonna be eight dollars, children six to 12 or four, and under six are free.
Let me get that one in. Okay, we got kite flying at Romack Orchards Saturday, September 14th, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Uh, address, 1149 H Road, Acton. Bring a kite, borrow a kite. And if you wanna contact somebody at 207-370-4191. Or, uh, is that, is that the email address for info? Okay, and I think that does it for our announcements tonight.
Right.
So we're gonna hear a motion to, uh, adjourn the meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I second that.
All right, there we go.
Okay.